Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting. And if you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and ever so strong.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Ooh, the stripes and bright stars through the perilous night, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the concert's singing air, gave proof to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does the star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Do a roll call. Here.
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 Here. So we'll go to the Consent Agenda. Roll call for approval.
Yes.
Yes.
Here, yes.
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 Yes. We have petitions to consider approval of the sick time donation system-wide special education teacher. What's your name, say residence?
Melissa Verdiere, Worcester resident and president of the EAW. I'm here tonight on behalf of a member of our union who is currently out on sick leave. And as with the other cases that I've come forth this year, this person has been out, and she's a system-wide special educator, and has gone through sick bank and done all the right things that she should do and has run out of days. So her colleagues have put together days for her, and we're asking that the school committee approve that.
So we'll send that to Member Quincy's committee?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Number Johnson?
Yes.
Number Bailey?
Yes.
Number Oliver?
Yes.
Number Kamara?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have a petition to consider the overview of the chamber music program as presented by Tracy Kraus, Executive Director of the Worcester Chamber Music, Deborah Greenbaum, Curriculum Coordinator.
Katja Norford.
Katja Norford, sorry. And parents with three students in the program. And Tracy, by the way, you do an excellent job. I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Petty, and thank you to the school committee for allowing us to present tonight. We were actually supposed to present prior, right before the pandemic shutdown. And of course, that didn't happen. So here we are today, and I'll make it brief because I know you have a long agenda. I am the Executive Director of the Worcester Chamber Music Society. You have information in front of you, so if you want to read our mission statement and go into all of that, you have that information available. We run an intensive inner-city strings program for 90 young people, primarily from the Maine South and downtown neighborhoods of Worcester called Neighborhood Strings. Our program serves 90 kids. We run at four teaching sites in this city: Woodland Academy, Learning First Charter, Clark Street Community School, and the Maine South CDC. Our Education Director was unable to be here with us tonight, so I'm going to play a short video for you. So you'll meet Arianna, Arianna Falk, and she'll tell you more about the program.
At Know Your School Night, my mom came to this table, and she signed me up without me knowing. So she just signed me up, and I didn't even know about it. And then she told me that I wanted to be going to this program.
We started our first year with just 10 kids, 10 instruments. We got a grant to buy instruments, and we had this dream of coming into the school and coming into this community and making a real deep impact and touching kids in this really deep way.
They taught us about the violin, and then we didn't just start right away. We just, we got to know our violin, we named our violin, and then we played our violin.
At the beginning, it was pretty nerve-wracking because we had to pick our instruments, and I didn't know what I wanted to play. So I decided cello was the most interesting instrument for me. Neighborhood Strings was more of like a commitment for me. It was more like I could help little kids, I can show what I wanted to play the cello and just influence other people. It was a pretty interesting experience.
I get very happy when I'm in this program. I exercise my arm a lot by going, "Hey, hey."
One of the really special things about this year is that we're seeing kids who we started in fourth and fifth grade graduate from high school and go to college. And that's amazing to see them grow up and do adults. We've seen it all happen in front of us through music, and that's, you know, been quite a journey with them.
You get to play, you get to go to concerts all around the world. Mechanics Hall has over 1,000 people. You feel nervous, but then you're like, "Oh, I've done this before." And then you like sort of grow out of it.
To me, it's great to see the journey from a student who comes in a little unsure the first day to someone who's playing all around the state as a member of that teen leadership group.
It helped me with a lot with the nervousness of performing in front of people. It just, it gave me a sense of what music is and how me as a teenager, I can show other people that I'm doing music not only for me, but for other people, who it can help and just give them a sense of happiness.
It makes me feel more confident because like now I have an instrument in my hands, so I know that I like am supposed to be there.
So our hope and our dream was to start a program that's just really making a sustained impact on kids' lives, that we get to see them every day, we get to know their families, we get to really change the way they're thinking about who they are as people and what their options are as they get older. One thing that I think would be a great dream for this program is that every student who comes through has an opportunity to go to college if they stick with the program. So it's a really different kind of vision than just, "Let's hear some nice music." It's like, "Let's really get to know you, change you, and hopefully even change the nature of the place we live through touching all these kids and families in a hopefully meaningful way."
I want it to be every day so I could like go like, "Oh, I can't come home, I have to go to Strings." And it's an excuse to get out of chores.
I feel like I would just, I would never lose that feeling of shyness, never feel so isolated. I wouldn't have found such confidence or such a loving group of people that would help me, you know, play an instrument and help other people. I don't think I would, I feel like I'd be just boring.
You have 30 minutes of extra time, you can do anything. You could use your phone, you could play Pokemon, you could even do your hair. And you could learn to do more than just what you do at home or what you do at the playground or what you do in your pool if you have one. It just like grows your maturity.
You can turn the video off. Thank you. Just want to say, our program is nationally recognized. We're funded by the National Endowment for the Arts, Carnegie Hall, Claremont Foundation, Amelia Peabody, and we are not here to ask you for money. I would like to bring up Debbie Greenbaum, our program curriculum coordinator, who directs our program at the Clark Street Community School. She works with our new citizens, students.
Hello. Unlike Joshua in the video, I still get nervous. So, but I'm happy to be here. Thanks for having us. I've been working for about five years in the program, and I was on an airplane with a lot of turbulence. And I said, "Okay, if I live through this, I'm going to get a program started for refugee kids in Worcester." So through the help of Tracy and the funding and Worcester Chamber Music Society, I, together, we formed this program at the Clark Street School. And it's in the new citizens classroom, so all of the kids in those two classrooms that have just arrived from different countries and different situations and some going to school for the very first time are able to play the violin. And I go there twice a week, and sometimes I'll get there on a day when a student has just arrived for the first time, maybe never having been in school before. And I, they don't speak English, so I mime, you know, the violin and kind of put my hand out. Like, "Follow me," and they always do. And then we go to the room, and I put a violin in their hand and up onto their shoulder. The first thing I always do is pop goes a weasel, I play it, and then they do the pop with the E string. And the smile that happens, you know, because they didn't have to speak English to be able to do this. And so it's incredibly rewarding and satisfying for all of us. But I'm also at the Community Development Center, and I teach in the other schools in the program. And so one of the wonderful things is the social, emotional part that we can really focus on that with the kids too, because we have a lot of time with them. And we get to know the parents really well. And one wonderful parent is here to speak about her experience as a parent. I teach her daughter, and it's been one of my immense pleasures in my life, so Katja.
Hi, I'm a little short for this. Hi, everyone. Good evening. And so blessed to be here tonight. My name is Katja Norford, one of the parting of the children on the String Program. Wonderful, wonderful program. I'm amazed how this program is running right now. Right now, they are on the CDC. I'm also part of the Maine South CDC board member and also part of the Maine South Business Association. And it's great to see how these kids are growing. In my experience, my personal experience with my two daughters and now my nephew, I try to carry all of them because this is amazing. The way they learn, the way that the teachers are giving up themselves for the kids is amazing. I thank especially the teacher because my girl is in love. The first time that she entered to the String Program, she got in love first with the violin, and now she don't want to get rid of her teacher. And all of them are the same. I proudly say that they've been amazing with all the kids. Right now, they are going every single day, so that's amazing that they have something else to do after school. And by learning an instrument, it's not just learning an instrument. I can see, I can see my daughters growing up, and especially the youngest one, that she's the one that has been the longest on the program. She started right before the pandemic. And it blew me how they did on the pandemic. For my family was a saver, they were a saver. They decide to go truce some, and they teach their kids. They were, you remember, Debbie? Oh, they get away with it, and that made them, you know, grow. The way, especially again, my youngest, she was very shy. Right now, I have to stop her. It's like, "Wait, wait, wait a second," because she grew into that aspect that she can do more. That it's not just the violin, she's in front of the crowd. She, you know, it's amazing. My oldest one now, she's playing the cello, she's been almost a year. And she started last, yeah, last summer, because they also have summer programs. I'm telling you guys, it's amazing. I wish to every single kid, especially here in Worcester, have the opportunity to play an instrument because it changed their life, it changed the way they think. It have them be, you know, integrate in doing something else, make them feel important. So it's amazing. Thank you. I really thank the String Program to be right there and try to do more for our youth, for our kids. They needed so much instrumental in this program. So thank you, and I hope this program continues to grow a lot more. And all the kids in the area are, if they want to, because not all of them. I can't speak for alone, so thank you, but it's really an amazing program.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. Keep up the good work. Okay, we have a petition to consider presentation, results of a survey about students' experience with the Holocaust, antisemitism, education as part of the social justice advocacy fellowship as presented by Anna Geist, South High Community School Junior.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to present. I think I had a presentation. I don't know if, no presentation? Okay, that's okay. Studies have shown that knowledge of the Holocaust has been diminishing in the United States. In particular, a 2020 national study of Gen Z'ers and millennials showed horrifying trends. Among other areas of ignorance, in most states, respondents did not know that 6 million Jews were killed in the Holocaust. In doing my own research at South High, I concluded that Holocaust and antisemitism education is poor in Worcester too. Over two weeks, I collected over 500 anonymous responses to my survey about Holocaust and antisemitism education. While the majority of students recalled learning about the Holocaust, less than half remembered learning about antisemitism. And when asked about topics such as modern-day antisemitism, antisemitic stereotypes, and Holocaust denial, many students had never learned about them. Later, when asked if they felt knowledgeable about the Holocaust and antisemitism, less than 13% said definitely. These results demonstrate that much of the Holocaust and antisemitism education in the WPS is insignificant to students. Even in the comments section of the survey, this was apparent. A comment by one student read something to the effect of, "It's funny that you talk about the Holocaust when Jews own most of the property in America." And this comment is blatantly antisemitic, invoking the trope that Jews have too much power. And the mere fact that this trope was used reveals the insignificance of the Holocaust to the student. This incomplete knowledge in WPS students is harmful, and as seen in the comment, results in hatred and prejudice in addition to an inability to understand the importance of history. I believe that WPS students need a stronger education, such as a 10-week class to better teach students about the horrors of the Holocaust and the effects of antisemitism, incorporating memoirs and testimonies by Holocaust survivors, such as the book Night by Eli Wiesel or The Boy on the Wooden Box by Leon Lazen, neither of which I have ever read in school. Not only will this deepen their understanding of these topics, but it will encourage them to be compassionate and to combat hatred and prejudice throughout their lives. Thank you for allowing me to present.
Thank you. Excellent job, Hall. Thank you. We do have a public comments section if people want to comment anything. Anything that's on the agenda, you have up to two minutes. Okay, seeing nobody? So we are going to go on to report the superintendent from here. Anywhere together, fiscal year '24 preliminary budget estimates. Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. Thank you. Mr. Allen, I want to thank Mr. Allen, who of course we know is truly an expert in this area, not just in Massachusetts, but nationally, and his team that works behind him, Ms. Consavo and the entire budgeting team. Next, are we pulling the slides up? Okay, there we go. So if we can go to Slide 2, which are the objectives. There we go. So tonight, committee, this won't be the first time for many of you, it's just new numbers, right? You will learn about our preliminary revenue estimates from the governor's budget and the preliminary cost estimates, all for FY '24, school year '24, '25. And then the key assumptions and drivers for our revenue and cost assumptions. So some of what you'll hear is, we've already budgeted four things that we have now. We just kind of put SOA ahead of ourselves because we want to provide for our scholars. And then finally, next steps. So keep in mind, as you hear these numbers, and I know Mr. Allen will restate it over and over again, that we have committed some of our SOA funds using ESAR so we could start offering programs and supports to our scholars and our schools in anticipation of the Student Opportunity Act coming forward. Next slide. As promised, you will see this at every committee. We reported the superintendent moving forward as appropriate. And so the budget, of course, will, are the resource allocations to make all of these goals and deliverables possible. But most specifically, goal number one, the district goal about refining and calibrating our systems to ensure that we're positively impacting schools. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Allen. Thank you.
Mr. Hall? Thank you. Through the chair. The FY '24 budget is framed by these following themes. The first is an enrollment increase of 583 students, primarily at the pre-K and elementary levels, after three consecutive years of enrollment decline. While we attributed the prior enrollment decline to pandemic-related national enrollment trends, we'll continue to monitor the enrollment through the next October 1st reporting period. The inflation factor used to adjust the foundation budget, the per pupil rates, is 4.5%, and that's capped for the second consecutive year by the state statute, but provides a modest increase in the foundation budget for next year. The FY '24 governor's budget is the third year of funding for the Student Opportunity Act, which was enacted in 2019 and continues with a phasing of 1/6 of the target goal rates next year. The FY '24 budget will continue to use federal ESAR funds to support the district's Student Opportunity Act initiatives, as well as expanded summer and after-school programs, technology, maintenance, and HVAC upgrades. We also use ESAR funds to preserve positions during the enrollment decline, which we called "hold harmless funding." Given the enrollment increase this year, we need to move those hold harmless funds back into the general fund budget as we begin the phase-out of ESAR II this September and ESAR III spending next September. And finally, the annual budget always reflects new staffing, resources changes, and new district initiatives, and that will be discussed and addressed through the district's resource allocation process over the next several months. Student enrollment, inflation, and the Student Opportunity Act phasing are the three most important drivers to our annual funding for the state's foundation budget. Enrollment from October 1 is used to determine foundation enrollment for funding purposes in the following year. Again, during this year, the district has seen a 583-student enrollment increase, an increase of 2.5% from last year. We are still 1,100 students lower than the pre-pandemic high level, but this increase is an encouraging sign going forward. However, within the overall enrollment increase, there was a 106-student decline at the middle school level, reflecting a 3% decline. However, this decline is mostly attributed to a lowest sixth-grade bubble from last year moving into middle school. Last year, sixth grade was the lowest enrolled grade level other than the assumed pandemic-influenced first-grade enrollment. Preschool enrollment grew by 243 students, or 36%, most notably at Head Start, where the enrollment doubled from the prior year. Of course, pre-K enrollment is subject to the most fluctuation on October 1 basis as pre-K students enroll throughout the year based on age eligibility. And then enrollment at the elementary level grew by 300 students, or 2.4%. And this level is still 1,000 students less than 2018, but it does exceed the 2020 and 2021 levels. Our high school enrollment increased 186 students, or 2.5% from last year. To benchmark our enrollment in comparison to the rest of the state, 194 of the state's 320 operating school districts had enrollment declines from the previous year, with our closest peers of Boston, Springfield, and Brockton all with fewer students on October 1 than the previous year. Overall, the state enrollment increased 2,206 students from last year, with a total statewide enrollment of 913,000 students. Overall, the state enrollment is 35,000 students less than the pre-pandemic enrollment in 2019. Our middle school level declined 3% from the prior year, while the overall state grade 7 and 8 enrollment declined 2.5%, or 3,600 students. Our pre-K enrollment increased 36%, and the state's pre-K enrollment increased 12% over last year. And while our elementary level increased 2.4%, the state's elementary enrollment increased less than a half a percent. While our high school enrollment increased 2.5%, the state high school enrollment increased 0.2%. Worcester's enrollment of 24,318 students is the closest of the enrollment of 2012 and has previously stated 1,100 fewer students from 2018, but ends a three-year enrollment decline. Again, we have used ESAR funds to maintain all instructional staff during this decline in anticipation of an enrollment increase as we've seen this year. Looking at grade-level enrollment, the overall increase from last year is 583 students, or 2.5%, with declines only at the middle school level. All other grade levels saw increases over the prior year. Over the past five years, elementary enrollment has declined 7.1%. High school enrollment has been relatively unchanged, and middle school enrollment has decreased 1.4%. Head Start preschool has decreased 26%, but doubled from last year. Digging a little deeper and looking at elementary school-level enrollments, eight of the district's 33 schools, excluding La Familia, had enrollment increases during the pandemic period, with Grafton Street increasing almost 16% during that time period. However, half of the district's 33 elementary schools had enrollment declines greater than the district's elementary average change of 7.1% as shown here compared to the pre-pandemic enrollment levels of the 2019-20 school year. One of the data points that the district uses to project future enrollment is the city's birth rates compared to kindergarten enrollment five years later. Here are the birth, the number of births in the city of Worcester back to 2005, which we fully acknowledge that Worcester's actual student enrollment is much more complicated than this. But historically, the district could accurately estimate the kindergarten enrollment by using approximately 80% of the city's birth rate from five years previous. In the 10 years shown here before the pandemic, the kindergarten enrollment was between 70 and 85% of the city's birth rate from five years prior. The kindergarten enrollment fell to 63% of birth rates during the year of the remote learning to start the school year. The enrollment reached back to 77% in each of the past two years, and we predict slight fluctuations over the next three years based on this pattern. At the secondary level, high schools have had a 2.8% higher enrollment over the past four years, with South High and North High seeing the largest increases, and Claremont and Doherty High seeing the largest decreases, with some of Doherty's decline attributed to reduced in-district special permission due to the new school construction. We expect that Doherty enrollment will be the largest high school after the school opens in 2024-25 school year. We saw significant enrollment increases at North High in 2011 when the school opened. South High has seen a 21% increase in enrollment at the new school since 2019. At the middle school level, the overall enrollment has decreased 3.7% over the past four years, with Worcester East Middle increasing 1.6% over that time and all other schools decreasing in enrollment. When we look at Worcester resident students at Commonwealth Charter Schools, enrollment in other school districts through school choice, private and parochial schools, and homeschool enrollment, Worcester Public School decline from pre-pandemic levels has not translated to significant enrollment increases. translated to significant enrollment increases in these other areas. The enrollment at charter schools have slightly decreased annually over the past four years. Students attending school choice, school districts through school choice has slightly increased over the past four years. Homeschool enrollment is more than double the pre-pandemic level, and private and parochial school enrollment continues to decline. The second important driver of the foundation budget is the inflation factor used to adjust the per pupil rates annually to reflect costs of goods and services for state and local governments. Two inflation factors are now used in the foundation budget. One for employee benefits based on the three-year average premium increase for all state group insurance commission plans, which is 5.16%, and the inflation factor applied to all other categories, which is capped under Chapter 70 at 4.5%. The overall foundation budget per pupil rates increased due to these inflation factors totals $19.7 million for next year. It's important to note that the actual inflation rate is 9.3%. As we face our ability to pay cost increases of salaries, utilities, health insurance, retirement assessments, and tuition costs, the capping of the inflation rate of less than half of the actual inflation rate leaves us $20 million short of full funding. The third important driver is the phase-in of the Student Opportunity Act funding. There are six major changes to the foundation budget formula resulting from the Student Opportunity Act. As determined in the State's Foundation Budget Review Commission, the first update is to the amount provided for employee benefits and fixed charges. The per pupil rates will be adjusted over a six-year phase-in period and use a new inflation factor intended to more accurately capture increases in health insurance as benchmarked against the state's GIC health plans. Next, the Student Opportunity Act provides funds to expand guidance and school psychological services within the districts. Again, this funding level will be phased in over the six-year period. The Act increases the amount of funding in the foundation budget for special education out-of-district tuition closer to the amount for special education reimbursement, or commonly called circuit breaker funds, as well as increasing the assumed in-district special education enrollments. The largest change included in the new formula for Worcester and other urban and gateway districts is two changes for low-income students. First, the Act has significant increase in the per pupil rates for low-income students, and second, reverts back to the previous 2017 method of counting low-income students. And the final change is the funding for English learners. The first change made several years ago, which was to convert funding for English learners from a base rate to an incremental rate. The second change is to increase this incremental rate over the six-year period to better reflect the cost for providing English learner services. These are the six areas of change within the foundation budget formula to be phased in over the six-year period. Based on these three budget drivers, the FY24 foundation budget for Worcester reflects the following factors. The enrollment increase results in a $3.7 million increase. The inflation factors applied to the per pupil rates increase $19.7 million. Incremental funding increases for English learner and low-income enrollment provide $7.5 million. And the third-year phase-in of the Student Opportunity Act is a $16.4 million increase. Again, prior to applying the Student Opportunity Act new funds, the inflation enrollment changes, the foundation budget will increase $31 million next year. The enrollment increases include the increase of 387 foundation enrollment students. The difference is this includes resident charter school and school choice students as well, an increase of 687 English learner students, and 719 low-income students for incremental funding. The third year of a six-year phase-in of Student Opportunity Act funding will provide $16.4 million. In total, the foundation budget will increase $47.4 million over the FY23 level. Again, these amounts include Worcester resident charter school and school choice students. FY24 is the third of a six-year phase-in of new targeted foundation budget rates, adjusted by inflation factor each year. In total, the FY24, the Student Opportunity Act provides the district with $16.4 million increase, and we're halfway through the six-year phasing, and we've seen a $52 million total foundation budget increase of the SOA, which is on track for the total increase we expect to receive upon full implementation of the target per pupil rates. We can briefly see how the phase-in of the new funds have been implemented in the district. Before SOA, we've testified in front of the Foundation Budget Review Commission that we had 720 non-special education teachers, fewer than the foundation budget would otherwise provide by the formula. For those around during that period of time, know that that was a result of the foundation formula significantly underfunding employee benefits and special education across the entire state. We, in FY20, we added 84 non-special education teachers to close this gap. In FY21, the year of remote learning and a significant enrollment decline, we added 19 teacher positions. In FY22, we added 98 teacher positions, and this year, we added 47 positions. In total, we've closed the gap by 248 positions. However, at this pace, we will not fully close this gap by the end of the full phase-in of SOA in 2027. There are a few key factors that impact our spending with SOA funds. To date, there have been significant investments in facilities, professional development, supplies, and material spending, other areas that we've underspent in the foundation budget, but these have been spent primarily through ESAR funds. Employee benefits and fixed charges continue to exceed the new inflation rate for the foundation budget. In special education, actual needs of the district also continue to outpace the new changes with the SOA formula. As stated, the foundation budget includes resident charter school and school choice students, and so we have to go from the foundation budget amount to the Worcester Public Schools' FY24 general fund budget as follows. The foundation budget is comprised of Chapter 70 state aid and local city contribution. Of these amounts, Chapter 70 state aid increases $41.3 million, and the required city contribution increased $5.2 million, equalling the $46.5 million foundation budget increase. Overall, that's a 10.3% increase over the FY23 final budget. From these amounts, we must reduce the amounts for charter schools, school choice tuition, and state's special education tuition assessments, which is a total reduction of $1.6 million, noting a large increase in charter school tuition and reimbursement this year. This reflects a $44.9 million increase over the current FY23 adopted general fund budget. As the superintendent mentioned, from this amount, we need to recall that we used $13.2 million this year from ESAR funds in what we call Student Opportunity Act bridge funds that need to be moved back to the general fund in FY24. We also used $4.1 million in ESAR funds this year for enrollment hold harmless funding to maintain staffing for an expected enrollment increase going into this year. In total, we have always planned that the FY23 budget, that these two items will be need to be moved into the general fund budget for FY24. So in reality, then, moving these costs to the general fund leaves $27.6 million available for the FY24 budget. From this baseline available funds, the administration estimates the following. Estimated salary costs for all employee groups are expected to increase $20.6 million. Estimated health insurance increases $2.6 million. City of Worcester retirement system assessment increases $2.4 million. Estimated building utility cost increases $2 million. The state has set out-of-district tuition rate increases at 14%, increasing the budget by $776,000. And then inflationary costs for all other accounts increases $784,000. At this time, the total estimated cost increases slightly exceed the available baseline revenue. More work will be, on these budget estimates will occur over the next several months before the budget recommendations are final for the school committee. Administration has completed resource allocation meetings with schools, resulting in requests totaling $22 million in new staffing, as well as requests for facilities improvements, instructional supplies and technology, and training and staff development requests. District administration has begun the FY24 budget process of aligning, adjusting, allocating, and reallocating resources and priorities to best support student needs across the district. FY24 will be the fourth and last full year of ESAR spending for the district. As a reminder, the district's ESAR four-year plan includes funds for enrollment sustainability, Student Opportunity Act bridge funds, as previously both mentioned, ventilation system maintenance, ventilation system upgrades, summer and after-school programs, COVID-related expenses of PPE testing and nursing, purchase of school vehicles for district-operated transportation, and technology spending. Almost all the district's new spending this year came from the amounts we have called it Student Opportunity Act bridge funds from the ESAR grant, totaling $13.2 million. This includes 174 new positions as shown here, as well as $2.7 million in services and support. The plan with the Student Opportunity Act bridge funding allowed the district to pre-fund SOA initiatives one year in advance and then move those costs to the general fund budget in the following year. FY24 will be the last year for this opportunity, and we must be mindful of transitioning off of ESAR funds next year and the impact that will have on the FY25 budget. While the administration has presented the ESAR spending plan for the entire period of funds available, the administration has always noted that spending could change year to year based on district needs. The administration will be examining the ESAR spending plan and make adjustments as needed for FY24. The administration expects that the funding levels included in the governor's budget will most likely be the funds available for next year and will not likely significantly change on the House and Senate versions of the budget that will be released later this spring. If there are to be two legislative priorities for next year, one would be to uncap the foundation budget factor from 4.5% to the actual 9.3% increase. I will note the state legislature did uncap the inflation rates in 2007, 2008, and 2009 above the 4.5% amount previously shown on Slide 15, and would provide, again, the Worcester with an additional $20 million. The other priority would be for the state to provide funding relief for the 14% increase in out-of-district tuition costs for school districts. So as part of the FY24 budget, here are some of the key areas of potential impact that may need to be addressed. How the district's enrollment will trend, this prior year increase following three years of decline. Enrollment is a significant factor in the foundation enrollment funding as we've discussed. How closely the kindergarten enrollment reaches pre-pandemic trends based on birth rates as shown previously, following this year's slight increase. How to address enrollment bubbles and shifts between grade levels and the associated staffing changes that will be needed. As we embark on a new strategic plan in using Student Opportunity Act funds, how we can get these spending to align with these new priorities. There are always new needs for the district, and how these new positions and programs will fit into the spending plan for next year will be developed with school and district leaders over the next month. With the guidance from our medical advisors as we move away from medical waiting rooms and other COVID-related expenses next year. The spending requires 20% of ESAR III funds be used specifically for required intervention and accelerated work with students, and that work is ongoing. Health insurance premiums, retirement assessments, out-of-district special education tuition rates, again, increase greater than the foundation budget inflation rates for these areas. The need for new space for expanding enrollments and specialized program needs are being looked at for next year. The district will be on the second year of a new student information system, while at the same time, the city has now begun implementing the new financial management system this week. Both of these systems will require ongoing resource in terms of support, people, time, and training to successfully implement. The school safety audit results will be available very soon, and the resources will be needed to address these recommendations. Ongoing building maintenance, renovation, and school construction projects will require significant investment in resources. To what extent can the district close the current staffing vacancies and provide full intended level of services in instructional and non-instructional areas next year? And again, we must be mindful that ESAR II ends this September 30th, and ESAR III will end next September 30th, so we must be prepared with the impact on FY25 and subsequent year The framework of the FY24 calendar begins with school and district resource meetings that have been ongoing. The FY24 recommended budget will be provided to the school committee on May 12th. A school committee budget hearing has been scheduled for May 24th, and the school committee deliberations on June 1st and 15th. Using both federal ESAR and state Student Opportunity Act funds, the FY24 preliminary budget will allow the district to meaningfully address needs of the district around staffing, supplies, and maintenance. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, for the presentation. Any questions? Member Melemah?
Thank you for making my head spin, but that's appreciated. Just a few questions. On high school capacity, Dougherty, what is Dougherty's new capacity going to be? Do you know?
Through the chair, it's just going to be just under 1,700 students.
Okay, and North?
North was built for 1,100 students.
How many?
1,100 was what it was built for.
And it's, so it's over 300 kids right now? And South?
Around 1,400.
Tech, I think, was?
1,400.
Yep. So how to, is there, so what's the concern with North and South being that much oversubscribed right now?
Mr. Allen?
If there is one?
Through the chair, I don't know that there's a concern. I think some suggest that when you build a new school, you don't necessarily see an increase in enrollment, yet we've seen that across the board at North, at Nelson Place, and at South High. So we do anticipate, particularly with the new programs going at into Dougherty, that it will be fully enrolled upon opening or shortly thereafter.
So through the chair, so would you expect capacity to go to 1,900 at Dougherty? We thinking every school is going to have 200 more kids than what their capacity is?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chairs, that was something we'll need to look at. I don't have an estimate at this time for Dougherty, but we can certainly look at that.
Okay. Through the chair. And the other key factors, before I go there, the charter school enrollment. So the state put out a, the state's budget, can you help us? I thought I saw information this week that said the state had actually included those, the new charter school enrollments before the vote of Desi.
Through the chair, I have confirmed with DESC that that is the case. The 200 students was included in our charter school tuition assessment and reimbursement prior to the vote of the board.
You know, we had a meeting here on the Monday night before, and my suggestion was Desi get investigated, and I would, this is outrageous to me that this is part of it, and I hope through the chair that the superintendent, when talked into Dr. Tuttweiler and everybody else, makes it perfectly clear, what a game. How much time did we spend, everybody here, preparing for this, and they'd already budgeted those positions because Riley said it was going to happen? It's disgusting to me, and I just, you know, I appreciate the letter that was put together to go to the Ethics Commission and the IG and the AG and everybody else, and, you know, maybe we can move to page one on the Boston Globe the next time that they write a story about this, but it is disgusting. And that one fact is just unbelievable to me. They didn't want to hear any discussion from any of us anyways. It was completely irrelevant. It was completely irrelevant, and so I just wanted to clarify that that was the case. Couple more questions through the chair. Health insurance, are we at the same, are we at a similar rate as the rest of the state? How do we compare?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, in my conversations with the city folks, that we do benchmark against GIC, and we're comparable to GIC, but they're looking at, when they set the inflation rate, they're looking at average premiums across all GIC plans. So I'm told the city benchmarks favorably against comparable plans in GIC.
And then, I think my last question. Facilities, we get $3 million every year from the city?
Through the chair, $4 million.
$4 million, okay. And that's a number we talk about every year, and we say to the city, you better give us more money, and the city says, yeah, we don't have any, and blah, blah, blah. But what I'm interested in is the amount of funding that we are, that the city is providing for our schools. And so the debt coverage or whatever we would need to understand, do we have any, is there a way for us to benchmark how much Worcester is providing for new construction versus other comparable cities?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, we certainly can provide what the city Worcester is doing. I can look into, see if we can look at somewhere up here, Community Springfield and Brockton particularly. I can contact those districts and see if we can get those numbers.
Yeah, and I guess Mr. McGurthy would not have a way to think about that, would he?
For those other communities, I can talk to him.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for the report.
Thank you. Thank you. We can file this if everything is all set, Mr. Member Novak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I find every year that I'm grateful, increasingly grateful, that we get the level of detail that we do in terms of where our revenue comes from, and I'm particularly grateful this year, as I'm seeing some of the sort of surprises come through at districts across the state. So just to piggyback on Member Mailman's point in terms of enrollment, if the foundation budget enrollment was up by 583, but our enrollment was up by 387, is the 196, no?
The other way around.
Through the chair, correct my calculation then, please.
So our enrollment's up to 583, was public schools, the foundation enrollment's up 387.
Because they were shrinking, okay. So then if, if my math for the next part was right, then our enrollment is a quarter of the enrollment increase of the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Through the chair, I believe that's correct.
See, that feels like something we should brag about. In fact, not only that, so I know this doesn't come into this because school choice comes in in a different way, but correct me if I'm wrong, it looked like our school choice in was up by something like 100 students, too, on the cherry sheet, through the chair?
So through the chair, I'll take a look at those numbers again. I had that we were at 100 total students, but I can look at those numbers again.
I mean, this really kind of goes along, again, with what Member Mailman was already saying, but far from being a district that people are fleeing or wanting to be somewhere else, I had someone, you know, ask me what I thought of waiting lists and so forth, and what I think of waiting lists and so forth is that we're up 500 students and basically nobody else in the state is. So, I mean, there's our story, I think, right? I'm not expecting anyone to necessarily have an answer on this right now, but these numbers do make me wonder in terms of both where we have students looking at, and thank you for those elementary breakdowns, and where we, you know, have fewer students. The thing about having 500 more students is that you have to put them someplace, and I am acutely aware, particularly when we start looking at that slide, as to when exactly it was that we closed elementary schools. So I will simply say, I expect to hear from administration on that, because clearly that's going to be something that we need to do something about. Do we have any sense of what's going on here with the increase in English learning students and also the increase in the number of students that are low income, through the chair?
So through the chair, I'll address the low income one. I believe it's really a reflection of the state doing a better job matching students. That was a presentation that I participated in through Masbo yesterday. It seems like it's really a better matching job getting up to that 185% of the poverty level number.
And did we shift a tier?
Through the chair, we are still in the 11th tier, but we are close now to the top 12th tier.
Because I was thinking in terms of, it looked like the dollar amounts that were coming in were higher. Do, through the chair to administration, do we, what is it that we're, I think it's projecting at this point, for the health, for the actual health insurance rate?
Through the chair, you're correct, the city's still using estimates. The number we've used at this point in time, I believe, was a 6% increase.
Okay, so it's not, it's not shockingly far off from what the state has had?
Through the chair, correct.
Okay.
But those final premium rates will be finalized over the next couple of months.
Okay. So I appreciate the comparison to where we were in terms of the foundation budget for regular education teachers. At some point, we had said that we were going to look at where we are on some of the other sort of what I would categorize as catastrophically underfunded categories, like supplies, like facilities, like administration and professional development. I'd appreciate if we could have that sort of somewhere in this runway into budget, because as is acutely made clear in the presentation, it isn't as if we have a lot of wiggle room, and I, part of our commitment was that we were going to do something about that. The only other two things I would add here is, I do think that we want to add a third thing in terms of our budget priorities, and we kind of already have, which is the MSBA. And I'm seeing statewide some pressures in kind of other directions in terms of where we're directing funding, and I have yet to see it really kind of gather steam that there's $21 million in inflation that we've got to pay for for Doherty out of local revenue sources. There's, you know, we've got a burn coat that needs replacing, we've got windows that we needed, West East Middle School, and the list goes on and on. We got to get the accelerated repair projects back, we got to get the MSBA uncapped, and we need, honestly, just, we need more funding there, and we also need the state to take care of inflation. I would just float, I'm not going to make a motion, but we might consider whether or not we want to have a legislative meeting. I know that very often when we've had those, they've kind of fallen way too late in the legislative session, and they haven't necessarily done a lot of good, so I would offer that as a caution, but I think that's important. And then the other thing I wanted to say was this. We are the only district that I am aware of where we actually allocate our budget frequently after the city has already approved it. Generally, the sequence is that the school district approves the budget and then sends it to their allocation authority, and I'm not going to sort of upset the apple cart this year, we have things in train, but I would like us to consider what that kind of ends up meaning in terms of kind of the message we're sending. And I put it out this year in light of this. When the school district budget is before the city council, it is really important that the city council understand that it's the bottom line, and that's it. They don't allocate the school district budget, the Worcester School Committee allocates the school district budget. We've had a couple of different ways in which the presentation has gone forward in previous years, and I am going to offer, and I do this in my capacity as Chair of Finance and Operations, that I do not think that the superintendent and the deputy superintendent should be alone in presenting the budget before the city council, because it isn't their budget, and they're not subject to questioning by the city council. I think that that needs to be something that we partner with them in doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other questions? So, Mr. Allen, I'll take a quick one on the head start. Why did that double? Give me a moment.
Through the chair, really, within any of the preschool, it's hard to use October 1 as a static date, because there normally can be more, what's the word I'm looking for, throughout the entire year. So I think it's, I think it's somewhat post-pandemic, and I also think it's just a time at which we count students on October 1. I think it's both of those two factors.
Timing issue in that. And just for, I did meet, I did meet with the state delegation, talk about the, I think everybody's, the pressure on the MSBA and what they can do, so, and talk some high constitutional officers, and the same thing, give them the heads up, and this is a big issue on our part, so, funding with the MSBA, so. So hopefully, I did talk to some areas, too, so coordinating, so, to make sure we try to do something for the statewide on that. So, thank you, Mr. Allen, great presentation, another award-winning budget presentation. Okay, so we can, we can file that? Roll call. Do you want to do? Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member Novak?
Yes.
Member McCallum?
Yes.
Member McHale?
Yes.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have next on the agenda, I think, anybody waiting for anything on the agenda? I think the lady up in the, is she waiting for an item? Yeah.
Uh, yes, we will. That's my work.
Oh, okay.
But, um, you can talk to her just a little bit.
Don't let me blow it. Okay. Okay. That's okay. We'll get it, we'll get it when it comes back. So we're going to go to Report, the Standing Committee. Governance and Employee Issues, met virtually on Tuesday, February 28th. Member McCullough present on behalf of Member Clancy, who is, who is ill, so.
Thank you, and I appreciate Member Clancy asking me for, to present for her, she is homesick and has no voice, and even virtually, it would be a challenge for her to do this. So on the February, the meeting of Governance and Employee Issues, met on February 28th. Virtually, the meeting was called to order at 5:32 PM. There were present Member Johnson, myself, Chair Clancy, the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Morris, and Acting Chief Human Resource Officer Dr. Q. The first item that was taken was GB 3-36 petition to consider approval of a request to donate sick days for a paraeducator at Norback School. Molyneux Martin spoke on behalf of a paraeducator, and the situation is actually a paraeducator who is helping to take care of their ill spouse and in need of additional sick days. After clarification was given from the administration on verbiage for using family sick time, we clarified that under the IA contract, that the paraeducator may use up to a maximum of 10 days to take care of a spouse, child, or parent. A motion was made by Chair Clancy to approve the use of 10 donated sick days for the purpose of the individual caring for their spouse, and on a roll call of 3 to 0, the motion was approved. Chair Clancy motion to cover any sick days that occur before the meeting is approved at the next school committee meeting on March 16th, which is today, and on a roll call of 3 to 0, that motion was approved. The next item on the agenda, GB 2-175, Request the Administration Review and Update the Dress Code Policy if Necessary and the Policy Under Student Lockers Regarding Backpacks Made of Mesh Transparent Material. We had a student speaker, Alana Coughlin, spoke about the dress code and requested that the policy be more relaxed in order to allow students to feel comfortable with what they are wearing. She also mentioned that some schools like hers get very hot in the summertime, and she hopes that things like that are considered. I motioned that we move the section on head coverings to a bullet point instead of its own section in the policy. Member Johnson asked that the administration, asked about the hooded sweatshirts being worn with a hood up and what the feedback was from our principals, and administration responded with information that educators were split on whether the policy would allow them to wear their hoods up, so the policy was written to compromise and allow the hoods to be provided, up, provided that the student has their face visible. On a roll call of 3 to 0, the motion to refer the item to the full committee as amended was approved. And then, and I think we have, I'm missing, I apologize. Do you want to come up to the table? Oh, I'm sorry, here we go, I do have it right in front of me, I thought this was part of the other presentation. Item ROS 3-1.2, Administration, From Here Anywhere Together, The Path to a Refined Strategic Plan to Approve the Superintendent's Strategic Plan and Goals. Mr. Allen outlined the key groups, stakeholders, and set out the goal of having a timeline and plan in place by the end of the school year, and introduced the Hanover Research Team that will help facilitate the strategic plan. The Hanover Research Team provided an introduction to themselves, their research abilities, and their methodological approach. Chair Clancy motioned to send this portion of the report to the full committee and to hold the item for additional information. On a roll call of 3 to 0, the motions were approved collectively, and on a roll call of 3 to 0, the motion to adjourn was approved at 6:11 PM.
Okay, Member Novak followed by Member Mailman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I appreciate the stick-to-it-ness of both the governance team and also the administration in getting us through the dress code, and thank you for pulling our students in as much as you did. I do have a couple of points. First of all, I would suggest that we also make a motion to align Policy JICA, which is the dress code policy in the policy manual, as this is the policy in the policy handbook, just to keep them in parallel. I just have two points on the dress code policy as it's being brought forward. The first is this. Our voluntary school uniform policy has no way out. So our schools get voted in, and there's never any way of getting them back out again. I'd like to make the proposal that we suspend this policy unless and until we come up with some way in which people can, schools can extract themselves from the voluntary school uniform policy, which we don't have at this time. It's a problem to have a policy that sort of only goes in one direction. The second thing that I wanted to flag is this, and this has actually been brought to my attention by both parents and students, which is that in terms of the vocational dress code, this is something where we literally require families to purchase stuff for their kids, and I have an issue with that in terms of our access to a free and appropriate education. And depending on how the adherence goes, we end up with kids that are shivering in class because they don't have the appropriate uniform layer and all of this kind of thing. I'd like us to consider, both as we move into budget, but also as we move into another school year, being very active in trying to eliminate places in which we are requiring families to spend money. I think that that's really only ethical, and so I would ask that, I'm not going to make a motion here, but I am going to ask that we consider that in terms of sort of how we're processing. The other thing then, Mr. Chair, is the strategic plan. And I'm really struggling with this, we, I know, you know, we got the agenda this week, the sort of minutes here are kind of cursory, so I didn't, it didn't occur to me until today to actually watch the governance meeting. I have a lot of concerns about our process right now in terms of what we're doing. The strategic plan, and I know I've already said this, but I'm going to keep saying it, is goal setting. Goal setting under Chapter 71, Section 37, is the school committees. And what I saw in governance was administration come in and say, we're doing this, and we're doing this, and we're doing this, and they're effectively receiving a reverse snap. The advisory committee advises the school committee, that means, first of all, it's a public body, second means it should be appointed by the school committee. 41 is way too many people to have any kind of a committee that's going to get anything done. The decision of who and how and what to really is up to the school committee. And I'm particularly concerned that we have a contractor that was hired that presented, I didn't know they were presenting, I don't know if anybody, none of the committee knew they were presenting. That should have been a process parallel to us hiring a search committee. We should have had a proposal as to what we were looking for, we should have gotten to review it, we should have figured out what we were doing. And instead, they already exist, we apparently already have contracted to them. I don't know how much we're paying them, I don't know how long it's for. I honestly was really concerned by the presentation I saw, because it was the kind of presentation that's designed to say, kind of, we know a lot of things, and we're using a lot of lingo, and it wasn't very accessible. And again, I apologize for saying all this at the meeting, because I usually try to kind of flag the stuff ahead of time, but I don't really feel like I got an opportunity to kind of know this until now. So I don't know how to fix this at this point. Governance is moving forward, I'm not going to vote against the proposal, but I am going to say again that this isn't actually how the strategic planning process is supposed to work. And I don't feel a sense of ownership as a member of this committee Um, and I don't feel a sense of ownership as a member of this committee at all, um, and that isn't actually how this is supposed to be. So, I, I'm putting that out there, and I appreciate the work my colleagues are doing, I really genuinely do, they're spending a lot of time on this, as well as the policy stuff. Um, but if we're gonna drive the strategic planning process, then we actually need to be driving the strategic planning process, um, at the committee level. So, again, I made the motion in terms of JICA, Mr. Chair, that would really be the only thing to vote.
What was the motion again?
Um, to, um, make the dress code in the student handbook reflect also, be reflected also in the policy manual. And the policy references JICA. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, so is, so we can approve the Governance Committee meeting as amended, probably doing so, Member Mailman?
Thank you. Um, a similar kind of response to the strategic plan work, um, and some specific questions, I, so, how much is this costing us, and is this subject to a public bid for a contract like this through the Chair? I'm not sure to who.
Mr. Allen?
Through the Chair, I'm just trying to recall, but the, I think the annual contract is, was $100,000, and there are subcontract through WEC.
So, are, are the Worcester Public Schools, through the Chair, is, this is, we're paying these, WEC is not paying for this, I would guess?
We're paying WEC to oversee the contract in addition to other services that WEC is providing us, like Woo Labs and other, um, uh, this is one of the, and I'm just drawing a blank on what they're providing us, but, so it's part of a contract that we've engaged with WEC, and they've subcontract, subcontracted that to Hanover Research.
So, they, so WEC has actually hired Hanover Research?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And do we know how mu, what is the cost of this strategic plan?
That component of the contract is $100,000 annually.
Just to note that that's more than our last strategic plan. Um, and then, I don't, I, you know, I watched the meeting as well, because I wasn't sure, like, I didn't get enough from these minutes. I, I don't, who is Hanover Group, or can anybody tell us a little bit more about who Hanover Research Group is?
Member Superintendent?
Through the Chair, so Hanover Research is a national, um, organization that does a lot more than just, um, strategic planning. They keep a, um, a library, if you will, of research that they do for different districts throughout the states, throughout the nation, that we can then access. They provide, um, professional development, uh, they provide the strategic planning and developing the infrastructure behind it, which is what was so important for us, because we understand the last strategic plan just didn't have those benchmarks, we want to make sure that was planned from the beginning. So, it's a research organization that does, um, lots of different work throughout the state, and, well, state and nation. Part of our partnership with them also includes access to their, they will do research for us on any kind of project we, or a project that we're looking for as a district to go deeper. So, for example, initially, we spoke to them about coming in and giving us some best practices about, um, prevention and early intervention indicator systems, that they would develop that using what we have, but also, um, giving us some ideas about what's happening in other states to put that into practice. So, they do strategic planning, and they do a lot more than that, and what we get out of this partnership with them is access to everything that they do throughout the nation, as well as the facilitation of the, um, helping us to put together really an implementation side of the strategic plan.
Okay, um, did we pick, did, did, did you or the, or the Governance Committee pick Hanover?
So, Administration brought forth Hanover as an option for us to use.
Okay, okay. And then that's, and then the Governance Group approved that, Hanover? Well, no.
How did that get approved?
I guess I, I'll, I'll stop, 'cause I, it's clear some of this is, I have concerns about a little bit of this as well.
I think we've used them in the past, I mean, WEC anyways, not, but.
Okay, so just to clarify, 'cause I, I did just watch the meeting, the Governance Committee did not vote approval on using Hanover. I'd like, that was not, that was not, they were not offered the opportunity to say, "This is something we're considering, do you want to do it?" Um, that was, that we're introducing you to someone who is already going to be working with us. Who decided that WEC was gonna be overseeing that this part of the work through the Chair? We can't both stand up.
No.
Sorry, I was sorry you were done.
Yeah.
I thought you were done. Where, where did, I know we have partnered with them in the Research Bureau, but it was, um, they really drove the process last time, which I, I'm, I, I was under the impression we were attempting to kind of, to take ownership back, I thought that was kind of a priority of the school committee in this case. So, can, um, can I get some insight into where the, we're contracting with WEC to contract with someone else on this process, um, idea came from, please, through the Chair?
Member Superintendent?
Yes, through the Chair. So, um, actually, it, I, when I was still in California, um, I, WEC reached out to me and started talking to me about the strategic plan work, and, um, and then it went from there, honestly. Part of maybe the transition and, and learning and understanding how things work here in Massachusetts versus California, and that, um, WEC was the, kind of the instrumental driver behind the work before. Um, and, and then I, I would say an assumption that I made that WEC would continue to be the, the, the group that we would work with moving forward. And there was a, um, and I'm sorry, Mr. Allen, I'm gonna have to put you on the spot, 'cause there was quite a few transitions, but there was a grant that WEC was writing, um, at the, again, when I was still in California, that we talked about, um, and I, what I don't, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the committee knew about that, but it, it included this work that they would be part, they would be instrumental in, um, driving this work with us.
Mr. Allen, is that right?
Through the Chair, yes, they've received a Nellie May grant that we co-wrote with them, that some of their funding will support the strategic plan as well.
Okay.
As well as the superintendent, um, entry work, so that was some of that as well.
Member Novak?
Um, yeah, through the Chair, I, I remember reading about the Nellie May grant, and, um, I, my impression strongly was that, that this was supporting the community side, sort of structural support piece, um, which I was reassured by, because that felt very much as if, sort of, that was kind of what should be the community side, while the strategic planning piece was being driven, again, by this body. Um, I, I don't want to belabor the point, and I, again, um, ascribe only a positive intent, I know that, that everyone here is well-meaning, um, and also is, is trying to continue to move forward. Um, I also don't want to rush this in a way that gets us back in the same place again, particularly as someone who was frustrated last time, um, but was actually not on the committee. Uh, so, um, I, I don't know that there's any pieces of this that we can untie. I, I would like to, um, get a better notion of kind of where the lines of authority are, because us contracting with someone else to contract with someone else, that's gonna be doing the work that is somehow going to maybe end up back here, um, is very concerning to me. Um, and, uh, again, I didn't find it particularly accessible, at least in the presentation that I saw. I don't know if the answers are to have them come to the full committee, or to, um, to, to sort of pull more of it back here. Again, I appreciate, in particular, I know that Member Clancy has been very attentive to this, and I appreciate that. Um, I, uh, I, I, but I, this, I don't like the way that this feels in terms of, uh, there being sort of contracts that are moving through on this stuff that aren't coming through this body, um, and sort of this, what feels very much like a push that we've got to rush forward, because we're saying it has to be done by the end of the school year. There's lots of school districts that actually do the strategic planning in the summer, have more time, um, I, I'm not allergic to that. Um, I, I would rather do it right than hit the deadline. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
So, also, everybody all right? Okay, so we are going to approve the Governance Committee minutes as amended. Roll call.
Member Johnson?
Amendment?
Yes.
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 Yes. I'm just going back to petitions, I don't, I think I failed to send this petition anywhere from the, uh, from Anna Geis from South High Community School, I sent that to teaching wording, and, uh, I sent that to teaching wording. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yep, okay, we'll get you out of here then, so, Miss McCullough, if you don't mind, we'll go to Miss McCullough's item, then we'll go back to the Student Advisory. To consider a review of the homework policy and explore no homework dates, expectations around homework overall, and utilize parent, student, and educator feedback. Uh, Member McCullough?
Thank you. This is an item that was brought forward by CPAC as part of their presentation, most recently asking the school committee to review the current homework policy, and also take into consideration adopting what are referred to as no homework days or no homework dates that some other districts currently utilize, in terms of being sensitive to cultural, religious diversity, as well as family obligations. So, I am going to ask that this goes to teaching, learning, and student support for us to review our current homework policy, that also, I don't believe we've taken a look at in quite some time, that has some pretty significant requirements for hours per night as you get into the secondary level, and it may not be that that's actually being followed throughout the district, but just going again, looking at our policies, making sure that the policy makes sense for us and the success of our students, getting that educator feedback, and, um, adjusting as needed and making sure it's consistent throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so send that to Committee. All set? Roll call.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
And the Mailman?
Yes.
And the Red Bell? Yes.
And the McCullough?
Yes.
And the Clancy?
Yes. Okay. You got everybody?
I think Laura said yes.
Yeah, Mar, Member Clancy voted yes? Okay. Sorry, I waited so long. (laughing). Okay, um, okay, we're gonna go back to Student Advisory Committee items. Introduce yourself, what school you're from, and off we go.
All right, thank you through the Chair, uh, my name is Nellie Rushton, and I am the student representative from Doherty High. Um, so myself and my fellow student reps are currently surveying students, uh, through Google Forms across our district high schools to identify what, the major themes amongst what our students care about right now. One of the initial themes emerging from this feedback was the success of integrating sports programs at the middle school level, which promote higher engagement with athletics as students prepare for and transition into high school. Middle school sports promote self-esteem, a sense of belonging, leadership, and collaboration, especially at a time where students are beginning to form their social identities. Many of our middle schools already offer sports like field hockey and basketball, and I believe softball as well, but as budget planning is considered, we would love to see funding for these pro, programs expand across our district in order to facilitate broader participation amongst all of the middle schools in our district to ensure equitable access is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Member McCullough?
Just, just a point of clarification order, are we, with these student reports, is that something that we, we can make a motion to send that to FNO?
We can refer.
I would like to refer that, um, to FNO then, possibly, I know there have been ongoing conversations about adding additional middle school sports, and actually some interest in outside, um, support and funding as well, so just kind of looking at the presentation from the students and expanding our opportunities.
Okay, we'll send that to FNO. Roll call. Thank you, by the way, nice job.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
And the Mailman?
Yes.
And the Red Bell? Yes.
And the McCullough?
Yes.
And the McCullough?
Yes.
And the Clancy? Yes.
Yes. Next item is to consider the approval of a prior year payment amount of $366,62 to Riverview School. All set? Roll call.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
And the Mailman?
Yes.
And the Novak? Yes.
And the Red Bell? Yes. And the McCullough? Yes. And the Clancy?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is to request that the Administration buy an update on student Chromebooks across the district. Uh, Member Clancy, if you want, uh, as it reads?
I'm gonna, I'll try to speak on it.
Yep.
I, um, I, the reason why I'm, I'm bringing this up is because I heard that a lot of our students are one-on-one, um, and I wanted to make sure with budget coming up that we have the funds to make sure that all of our students are one-on-one across the district. So, that's why I'm just asking for an update on our Chromebooks. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, so we're going to send that to Administration? Roll call.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
And the Mailman?
Yes.
And the Red Bell?
Yes.
And the McCullough?
Yes.
And the Clancy? Yes.
Yes. Next is to consider the approval of the proposed 23-24 student handbook of the Worcester Public Schools. Uh, we're good on that, we can mo, vote for approval? You want to send that to Governance, or? Okay, send that to Governance, okay? Oh, I thought it came from Governance, okay, I get it. Okay, so we'll, uh, send that to Governance? Roll call.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
And the Mailman?
Yes.
And the Novak?
Yes.
And the Red Bell?
Yes. And the McCullough?
Yes.
And the Clancy?
Yes.
Yes. Next is to consider an update to the district policy on query screening for volunteers as outlined in the Worcester Public School handbook. Any questions on that?
Through the Chair?
Go ahead.
If I can speak to this a little bit?
Yep.
So, um, Committee, this, this revision, um, came as a request from some of our families very early on, so I asked our Chief Diversity Officer, Ms. Perez, to take a look at our existing policy, um, for volunteers, might it be, um, outdated in some areas that we can make some changes, still be in alignment with what is required with state law, but also, um, allow our families to participate in their child's education? So, we had our legal take a look at it, and what we are, um, proposing in front of you is what our legal, um, recommended that falls again within the, the, the law, both at the state and federal level, but also allows our families to engage in their children's learning, um, as, as proper and appropriate, and we would make sure that this, um, this new policy would not only be outlined in our student handbook, but we would make sure that it aligns with the district policy manual moving forward. And we'd like to refer this to, uh, Governance and Employees Issues.
Member Mailman?
Um, I'm not sure if the, I'm not sure of the timing of all this, through the Chair to Administration, um, there were some very specific questions about, um, PTO and queries, and is that answered in what's provided? I mean, I could read it one way and say, "Yes, there's no direct or unmonitored contact with children," so, can you help with that, with the PTO question specifically?
Yes, so this is part of answering that question, so, if for some reason something comes back on somebody's query, we would, um, not allow that person to be unattended with somebody else's child, but they could participate, for example, in a book sale, um, that then, that the PTO is putting on, and there would be others there. So, it does, um, address that, just to make, again, to allow families to engage, there could be something in a person's query that is, you know... There could be something in a person's query that is, you know, decades old.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So send that to Governance. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We are on 3-82. Consider approval of the following, I think there's 11 items there, courses. And, all set? That goes from Member Mailman to stand and Member Novak. We'll switch her around.
Just a quick question, I think. All the AP classes specifically are then available across all high schools to all high school students, is that correct?
Dr. Sibley?
Through the chair. Yes. In fact, any course that the school committee approves, it's not being approved just for one school. It's approved in the district's catalog to be offered at any high school, or middle school, or elementary, depending on the nature of the course.
People are whispering in my ear that the answer's no.
Well, it depends how you work it, right? Do we have teachers is the question?
So, through the chair, the course is approved to be offered at any school. That does not mean that it will be offered at every school in any particular year.
Through the chair, if it's an AP class, and it's Comparative Government and Politics, which was awesome, I loved the description, the whole bit. And there's, in any of our high schools, and it, so what school is this going to be offered at?
Forgive me, let me, I can retrieve that information for you.
So let's say it's South. So can kids from all high schools apply to take that class at South? And if not, why not? And can we look into doing that?
So through the chair, we can certainly look at, I do remember it was in fact South that requested that, that particular course. They were not the ones that requested pre-calculus, though. That's something that's being looked at across several schools. It's a new course, the AP pre-calculus. But that is something that could be looked at. All of our schools generally, at least at the end of the day, they're on a similar bell schedule to facilitate early college transportation and innovation pathways transportation. And so that's something that could be looked at to see whether students could possibly go from one school to another for that purpose.
And is same true for elementary chorus, concert band, string? Or is that just certain schools it's available?
Dr. Sibley?
So through the chair, I would need to confirm that. I believe that those courses are offered on a wider basis than I might understand at this time. But they, they're basically, the reason that these elementary courses are even being put forward is that in Woo ECU, we need to account for the specials or the the courses that students, the special times that students are with the specialist, the special teacher, their music, or PE, or other course during the elementary day when their teachers are on their prep. And so that has to be accounted for within our student information system, and that's why those courses are being put forward to specifically describe what the students are doing.
Last, last question through the chair. Emergency medical technician, the CTE classes, where are they going to be offered?
Those are being offered at North High School. They received a capital skills grant last year that included ambulance simulator, among many other pieces of equipment. And so that is something that's being built into the program at North High.
Thank you.
Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I realize that this will go to TLSS to be added, and I'm not on TLSS, though, so I want to flag a couple of things if I could. First, I just want to say I appreciate actually getting this far enough ahead where we're not being pushed to have to approve it tonight, because I've been there, and it's not a comfortable feeling. Secondly, there's a procedure that happens before it gets to us. Can I just suggest that you all look at that? Because I am not sure that it's necessarily working. And I'll just leave it at that. I also would like at some point for us to talk about College Board and our relationship with College Board. Obviously, partly in light of their relationship with the state of Florida, among other things, but in general, some of the decision-making processes and whether or not AP is really bearing its weight and whether or not, I mean, we're the ones who are actually paying the bill for them at this point. So I feel like we're, we have a good ground for having that conversation. In particular, by the way, the thing that we say about AP here, which is affording them the opportunity to earn college credit is increasingly less true. And I don't like it when we're putting forward things that aren't really true. The only other thing that I wanted to flag is that I understand and I appreciate the point in terms of the instrumental, the concert band thing. If we're going to say something like students should have one year of instrument lessons, we better make dang sure that every child in this district actually has access to those. And I mean, I've fought here for years to make sure that we've got the money for it, and we probably don't still. But we cannot be demanding prerequisites that we're not actually offering to everybody. So I just want to put that out there. Thanks.
So we'll send that to Teacher and Waring. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Member Clancy said yes as well.
She's a yes. Member Clancy? Okay, so we have to consider revision of the job description, the Chief Human Resource Officer.
Yes, through the chair.
Superintendent?
So I just, I want to point out, there are going to be three actual job description revisions coming forth to the committee tonight. None of them are new positions. They are actually existing positions that we looked at the job description and wanted to better reflect what the work is. You'll note that there is a change in title of our Chief Human Resource Officer. We wanted to, what was really important was to really reflect the work of the people and how important people are to our organization. There are some items in here that very much want to make sure that, you know, that our, whatever we end up calling that division about bringing people in, right? So our recruitment, our retention, and our retirement processes are really people-centered, starting with caring for the people at the heart of the work. So that's what this job description for the Chief Human Resource position revision is. And I would like to, upon approval of the position, to appoint Dr. UQ, who has been doing the work since at least January of this school year and doing a fabulous job. So with that, I move it back to you, Chair.
Any questions? Let's see. Member Kamara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think these are worthy positions.
Is your mic on? It is off.
It's on, yes. Thank you. I just wanted to inquire about, because there's no, I understand that in the job description, there's language in there talks about interdepartmental support. But I would like for these two jobs description, I understand we're talking about the Chief Human Capital Officer? Right? Yeah. So I would, I would like for there to be also description or language that talks about how this position works with the Chief Equity Officer. Because right now there's, I understand theoretically that's what's going to happen, but I would like for there to be language in terms of how they, these two positions, you know, is going to work together.
Thank you.
Okay. All set? Okay, Member Novak, follow by Member Mailman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some proposed revisions. First of all, I, maybe I'm too much of an English major. I, human capital, capital is something that you buy. It's something that you trade. It's something that you own. So I'm going to ask if we could consider calling this the Chief Personnel Officer instead. I hope that that encompasses what you're trying to do here. I spent some time with the job description to try to make sure that I'm, that I'm getting it. That would be my first proposed revision. The second, we're going to do some editing here, Mr. Chair, just to warn you. The second thing is, I really would suggest that we take the bullets under preferred. With that, everything below three years of a senior level of leadership, so that's the problem-solving, ability to successfully navigate with ambiguity, create and main strong community collaboration, verbal and written communication skills, leadership qualities, and so forth down the line. I would really suggest that we move those up to required, because to me, they sound like everything that we expect of that position. Like, we really need someone to actually have all of those qualities and skills and abilities in order to do the job. And I don't think that that's sort of overloading the requirement either, in terms of balance. The third thing that I would suggest is that under essential duties and responsibilities, we slip out of parallel structure halfway through. So the, everything after the second develop, so prepare, provide, direct, engage, ensure, and the verbs that are after that in each one. We need to drop the S, because otherwise it doesn't align with the first part. And then the other, only other thing that I was going to flag is that the first bullet on the last section manages relations with external audiences and partners. I don't think we want to talk about the school committee as being an external audience. And I don't think that that's really what's intended. But I'd like to suggest that we think about, you know, whether it's managing relationships with other, with other bodies, however you want to put that bullet. I really would suggest that we, that we recast that first part, because I don't think that's really what is intended. So those are the motions I would make. Otherwise, I would certainly approve.
Yeah, I just want to, there's no objection to the amendments before we move on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Mailman did ever, ended up before I did.
Yeah. Member Mailman?
Just curious why the Chief Human Resource Officer has to have been a principal. That's weird to me.
Great question. And so there's an analogy that I've used with the administration team at different times, and it's this idea of being a new fish to the water. And so it was interesting to me that we did not have that as the requirement, because I've never been in a district that that wasn't the case. And this is why. Because the, the systems and structures that a, an HR department leads and develops is directly impact, directly impacts schools. And when you don't, you've never been a principal, you don't realize, you may unintentionally not realize that systems and structures you put in place or don't put in place have very negative impacts on schools. When you are a principal, or you've been a principal, it makes a world of difference in that sense. It also helps greatly when working with our collective bargaining units, most specifically our teacher units, because they again have the educate, they have the teaching and learning knowledge. So having our, our current acting HR person coming out of a school has dramatically shifted the way the work has been going on.
That is 100% logical to me. It makes a ton of sense. I just don't want to limit ourselves in the future. And I just, I'm curious, like, is that standard practice in Massachusetts? And I'm not sure anybody here might have that answer or not. But I just, I would just be careful about that. It's absolutely working for us. This is why you're thinking about doing it, but is it, do we want to, I don't know. It's probably not always been the case in the past, and I just don't, and I can see why it makes a ton of sense. So I guess this is going to go to Governance anyways? Or it's, is this going somewhere? Or these are going nowhere?
This is for approval this evening.
We can send it to Governance, but we can do it tonight. Amendments sound reasonable to me, so I, unless some of them jut.
So what would I, so can I just ask for like a rethinking about that item before we print it in hard copy?
Okay, what you could do is hold, I haven't come up with the amended amendments, the amendments, so we can look at it at the next meeting if you want.
Okay.
If you want to see it, or we can just vote tonight. But we'll come, we'll come back to that in a minute. Let's see what everybody else has to say.
Thank you, through the chair. And I would just ask, in response to Member Novak's request about changing the title to Personnel, could you comment on why you opted to go with human capital versus personnel? Not to dispute the English component, but to really identify why we're looking at this more of a human capital as a personnel, and if you could just explain that to us, so I have a better understanding. Thank you. Through the chair.
Yes, through the chair. So actually, I took a look at what is out there in different districts. And there has definitely been a shift, I think, nationally even, around, less around human resources, which can tend to have a connotation of kind of paper pushing, right? And we just, we bring people in, you, we stamp you, we send you off to your work location, we bring you in when you're in trouble, we discipline you, and then we send you off when you retire. And we didn't want that perception. We really want this to be about the people. And so then played with different titles that I've seen, and that actually some of the committee members in speaking with you at different times have shared. So like Talent Acquisition was one that we looked at. We looked, we talked about, so Chief Talent Acquisition. But then, did that encompass everything that that department does or that division does? No, it's more than, you know, bringing people in and and so we went back and forth, and we, we had actually a really long title that was trying to capture everything, and that seemed kind of crazy, too, because then it was like this really long acronym. So we landed on Chief Human Capital and understand, because we actually had some of our, our union partners ask us about it as well, and it didn't sit well with them either. We see our, our, the people that work for us and with us as like the most important thing. So we saw capital as like exclamation point, you matter more than anything. You're the ones doing the work with the children, right? It's not something we have to like, you know, die on the sword about. It's, really, it's what the position will be doing. But the move away from human resource, that we're definitely committed to saying, we don't want it to be paper pushing. This is so much more than that. You know, maybe before, a long time ago, it was appropriate, but less now.
Member McCullough, all set?
Thank you, because I had seen it elsewhere, so I was curious what the thought process was of utilizing it here. So I, I do understand where that makes sense for what you're looking for.
Member Kamara?
To the chair, thank you so much. Yes, I also agree. I would just want a summary, because there's a lot of things that were said here.
Okay, we can, we can hold this to the next meeting, ask for them, the proposed amendments, and so we can see them.
Awesome.
And we can vote on each one of them.
Right. And I guess my other thing is, because the idea, I know we already have the people hired, so I don't think like, if we hold on to this until the next meeting, if that's a problem, or if that's stalling anything on your, on the administration's part, but.
Ambassador Superintendent?
So holding on the chief, the revision to the Chief Human Resource Officer position is okay. We can make that so that the committee feels comfortable. We haven't moved on yet to the chief, the other one. So I'll speak to that one when we get there.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll ask for the superintendent to come in with the amendments, so we can look at them highlighted and roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Go back here. Okay. No, screw up here. Is that where we are? I get it right. I have it here. Okay, we, next item up is the consider revision of the job description of the Chief Diversity Officer.
Through the chair. So, first, I want to explain why we're bringing this forward, and I did check with her to make sure she was okay with this. So, our current Chief Diversity Officer, Yvonne Perez, will be retiring at the end of this school year. And so, we want to just first congratulate her on her soon-to-be retirement. And, and so, as a result, it made sense. That's why these are coming together at the same time, because what we did was took a look at the existing Chief Diversity Officer position, which was very heavy in the hiring and recruitment of our diversification of the workforce. And so, we are moving much of that work over to whatever will be the new position's title. So, our current Chief Human Resource Officer position, including the director that was hired, that's currently under Ms. Perez, ICO, will be moving to the human resource wing, right? So, we can have all of that there. And so, then it's, well, so then what exactly are we looking for when we think about a diversity officer? And so, again, started doing some research on what is out there, talking with quite a few people in the community about the intent behind even this position in Worcester Public Schools. And so, really, the, what is being proposed as the Chief Equity Officer, that work is much more about being a guardian of anything and everything equity-minded. So, Member Mailman, your questions around course, access to courses across our schools, that would be something that we would, that this, this position would keep all of us on track about thinking through that equity access and belonging lens. This position would also work on developing a, a vision with a group, right, a task force around, when we say equity, and if we call it that, or if we decide to call it something else, the group will come up with that. But a collective and common understanding around this work, and then keeping everybody on track. And then monitoring our policies, monitoring our resource allocations, monitoring our data, that's much of what this work will do. So, very few new things will come out of this, monitoring our curriculum, right? We have people who do that work. This position will make sure that everyone is starting to put on the equity pair of glasses every time we're doing something and keeping us in line with that. They'll also be working integrally, to your point, Member Kamara, with the talent acquisition, the instructional delivery, our data teams, all of that. So, that's what we're looking for in this position, is someone who doesn't have, they really focus on process. They don't create new things, they focus on process, they make sure that we're moving in the right direction, and, and they keep us focused on making sure all children and staff have access to high-quality teaching and learning opportunities.
Okay. Member Novak, follow by Member Kamara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just one. In the really long paragraph, that's the position purpose, we just, we, again, we drop out of parallel structure. So, the, after it says the gaps between the highest and lowest performing students, the, the previous bit there was effectively, how is the district going, how is the Equity Officer going to lead the district? By doing a series of things. So, it should say by eliminating the racial disproportionality, and then skipping down by planning, organizing, and directing, by providing, and by developing. So, it's really just adding by's and ing's. Honestly, they ought to be semicolons in the last two, too. That's all.
Okay. Member Kamara?
Um, to the superintendent, to the superintendent, I just wanted to clarify. So, for this position, you mentioned that the person isn't going to be creating new things. Is that what I heard?
There'll be, they won't, yes. So, for example, if we're purchasing curriculum, they're not going to go and purchase a separate curriculum. They're going to make sure that the curriculum that we're, we're purchasing has, has the elements we need, so that we have culturally, linguistically responsive curriculum for everybody.
Okay, 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 okay. So, because I'm just trying to understand practically, theoretically, because, I mean, with this, I mean, this is a huge position. I think this is, you know, like, we all mentioned Yvonne's position, which, you know, we've been doing great work in the city. And so, when I, when I heard, I was like, what? We're going to change the title? Edit it and not want to, you know, enhance and grow? But, so, you're talking about more in, I don't even know how to even term it.
So, so it's really important that equity doesn't live in a silo, right? So, if we, if we, and I know we all agree with that. And so, if we have this person creating, or this division, this, this position, creating products, then it, then equity only belongs there. That's just the way people start to, to make sense of it, right? Versus when we're providing professional development, like, this, this position might say, you know what, we really need to bring in something around some kind of social justice initiative. I know EAW wants to work on that with us. So, this person would be leading that work, but the actual delivery of it and, and all of that might run through a professional development department, right? This person will make sure that it meets these needs, but the delivery of it will come through somebody else.
Okay. But, so, okay, so not necessarily that the ideas and the strategies are, can be new, can be enhanced?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve as amended. Row call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is the consider revision of the job description of a Director of School Safety. Member Novak?
This is more like, I feel like we have to kind of establish a house style in terms of how we're writing things, and I, I realize this is a transitional thing. This is the only job description I've ever seen that talks, that, that uses the phrase "you, you must." And I'm not sure that the second person's really where we want to go with this. Can I suggest instead that we, instead of all the places it says "you," we just substitute the director? I think it works everywhere. Or the Director of School Safety, or however you want to put it. But it, it just struck me as odd, because it's sort of out of, out of step with the rest of what we, the rest of the job descriptions we have. That's all. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
So, with that, okay, so to approve this as amended, row call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. We're going to consider endorsing the Massachusetts Legislative House Document Number 45 and Senate Document 1697, an act to improve access, opportunity, and capacity in Massachusetts vocational technical education. Member Mailman?
Thank you, another easy item, I'm sure. This bill has been worked on by folks in the vocational world for many years, and the subjects that are addressed in this bill are incredibly important on the vocational side. You know, I thought about Worcester Tech coming into the district and getting 90% funding, and how critical that was, because otherwise, we weren't going to have a school. And, you know, what, what the regional schools go have, are, are up against is, is different than schools that are in situations like ours, where we're part of a district on the vocational side. And I recognize that that might be different on the comprehensive side as well. This bill, and I have talked to someone that's in our city, is Tim Murray, and he is one of the co-chairs of the Alliance for Vocational and Technical Education, and as well Steve Shiverick, who's the head of MAVA. And I asked both of them about the language in this bill, which talks about regional vocational schools specifically. And I said, well, is Worcester Tech, or Putnam, or, or Madison Park excluded if we're district schools? And the answer was no. This is, does not exclude schools like ours that are part of the system. So, I have a lot to say about this, but, so I, I think people should be clear about that. This is establishing money for, for expansion of vocational and technical education. The state has spent years talking about admissions and trying to fix things, and at the end of the day, expansion of these programs is what we're going to need in order to get more kids into vocational program. And I am like really proud that Worcester is doing more than anybody else. We are getting more Chapter 74 funds in this city than Boston, Springfield, or anywhere else. And I think it's, you know, I, it's important as a person with vocational background that this is an important priority for our district. And I think with all the dollars we are spending, it is very clear that it's an important district, and we're part of a system that's larger than ourselves. When we raised money for Worcester Tech, we had the business community, we had everybody involved, and those same business partners are partners that care what happens at some of our regional techs. So, we are not disconnected. What happens in this district is not disconnected from what happens in the region and what happens with vocational education. So, I absolutely support the, the money that they're asking for, for additional school construction needs. That does not talk about prioritization from the state. That just says, there's a bucket of money for vocational work. We may not, we have a 17-year-old school. Hopefully, we won't need another school for another 25 years. But if we do, this would impact us. If we were to expand that school, that would impact us. So, I think, we can't think about this minute, we have to think about what this means overall for a budget. I just, a couple of other clarifications, so that folks understand, some of this work is, is about making it easier for the city and towns to get that money, which doesn't necessarily impact us. This is, to me, the most important item. It establishes a new office of vocational and technical education in DESI. And I am at a low point with confidence in what happens at DESI, and what happens in the review of what goes on. So, this would, this office will be charged with overseeing Chapter 74 and ensuring students have equitable access, including providing technical assistance to traditional schools, comprehensive schools that have adopted Chapter 74 programs like South and Doherty. So, in, in addition, the bill requests that the governor create an Assistant Secretary of Education for Vocational Education, and I am 1,000% in support of that. Adding seats to MSBA with a vocational lens, and I hope that you'll feel as passionately about supporting vocational education as I do. Thank you.
Okay. So, a motion to support. Member Novak, I'll follow by Member Kamara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I rise in opposition. The bill language is actually quite clear. The section two, it adds 20 percentage points to projects for reimbursement for regional vocational technical schools and county, regional, and independent agricultural schools. The only advantage to us is it adds 5% to vocational technical educational programs. I'm going to note that regional vocational programs, and I would not say this anywhere outside of the context I'm in, regional vocational programs are some of the best-funded school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, far and away. They've also received, far and away, the largest amount of grants under the previous eight years of the gubernatorial administration. They have been everything but neglected. We are nowhere near the, the aim of this bill. This bill really does not represent the needs of the Worcester Public Schools, which I'm going to note again. If we're going to advocate for anything for the Mass School Building Authority right now, we really have to be focused, because we've got a building project just up the street that's costing us $21 million more than it did three years ago. We've got a high school that is, we're going to have to put a couple more million dollars in, even though we know we're going to have to replace it as soon as we can. We don't know what we're going to do with Worcester East Middle School's windows, because neither the district nor the city have the money to replace it. We need the state to do something. The state has no plan, because they have no funding stream right now, because that's gone, because MSBA has so little money. We also, we're not going to get a roof for Union Hill, or everything else that's underneath it, because of the accelerated repair. And with all due respect to my colleague, it is actually competitive funding, because first of all, it's MSBA, which currently is capped at $100 million to $800 million, which, thank you, Representative Mahoney, but that's not enough. It should be uncapped. But secondly, this specifically allocates funding from the Fair Share Amendment, which there's only so much of, which everybody's already fighting over. So, yes, it is a specific bucket of money that only goes so far, that we actually need to go to other places right now. Not someday, if Worcester Tech needs to expand or be replaced, it's going to have to go in the order just like everybody else is. Not someday, if we decide to expand vocational programs. We've, we've already done that with Doherty and so forth. This is not in the interest of the Worcester Public Schools. It's not in the interest of the Worcester Public Schools. And we need to be focused in terms of our advocacy, Mr. Chair, so that we don't, don't get distracted and once again neglect the, the most of our school district with some notion that someday, we might possibly get five more points in a building project. I'm, I'm really concerned, I, I think back to, to previous legislative breakfasts, where we would say, we have four budget points, and then the school committee would start to talk. And next thing you know, we'd have everything thrown in the heap, and the legislative delegation would walk away, not actually knowing what our priorities are. Mr. Allen presented to you tonight, I suggested we need to focus on MSBA. We can't just sort of be throwing additional other things in there that are for the benefit of other districts, which, let me attest, are very well organized and also are very well-funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kamara. Follow by Member McColl?
To the chair, thank you. I just have some questions. I have, so I have a question. So, I guess like, I am interested to know, because I mean, this talks about vocational, but it also talks about different types of, different ways in which that we can remodel vocational education for a school district, right? And I am in support of this, but I want to understand more so, because I think we're all learning. I'm learning about all of this stuff, like, particularly around like funding that is directed to, as Member Novak just mentioned, directed towards, for us in our district, Worcester East Middle or other schools that we need to focus on pertaining to this bill. I don't know if my question is clear, or?
I don't know if we're ready to answer. We can hold this a week if you want to the next meeting and come back and discuss it.
Right, just maybe get some...
We can study a little bit more, if you want to do that. Mr. Allen, do you know anything?
To the chair, I actually had a conversation somewhat with, with Member O'Connell Novak this week in terms of what is between funding, between accelerated repair and new school construction? Is there a middle ground which would accomplish these type of renovation projects in schools that are never going to get approved by MSBA, because they're small, but very important to do? So, to some extent, I, I think there's going to be some way that MSBA has to change the way they fund some of these expansion projects or smaller addition projects instead of the major renovation projects, not just the windows, roofs, and boilers that the accelerated repair. So, I think that's the struggle, that even when we think about our buildings that are not accelerated repair, and are not full school construction, what, how, in things that we just can't afford to do ourselves, because it's, how can MSBA support those projects within their available funds? Whether it's vocational programs, whether it's, you know, whatever else we have in our... our schools to do. So that's kind of a conversation we were talking about earlier this week with regards to MSBA funding.
Okay. And I guess, like, my only, thank you so much, Sam. So I guess my only other, like, insight to this is that I know that, from just past conversations with people in our district, I know that people are looking for other alternatives in terms of, like, what we offer in our district. And I think, and I was actually chatting with Member McCullough about, I think in the past, there was a custom conversation about having some innovation school, I don't know where that conversation has gone, or whatever. But I do think that as, even as we think about, maybe not now, because we know that these things happen, we pass the bill, but then it takes, who knows when, right? But for us to start to maybe think about these different ideas in terms of how we're offering education to our kids in the district. But yes, I agree with you, if we can get more education in, in regards to this bill, if that's what we agree to.
Member McCullough?
Thank you, and I would also support holding, just to get some more information, because I definitely support us having more funding for vocational schools, because I think we know that there's a need there, but I'm also very interested in us, I should say vocational funding, we're talking about opportunities, but obviously, we know we need to replace a high school here in the city, and we know that we have other concerns with Worcester East, and then other projects that Member Novak mentioned, so I just would like to have a little bit of a better understanding about this bill, because I want to ensure that supporting something like this isn't then taking away, you know, from where we want to see money go, from the state and MSBA. So if holding it, just for more information and clarity, I'm not sure.
Member Novak?
Yeah, can I, can I ask what information and where people think it's going to come from?
Thinking of the wrong?
Because like, this is, I mean, it's a proposed bill, the language is what the language is. It's not like there's a, there's not a, there's not any more to it, it's just, they're going to vote, they're like, it's going to move forward, it might change, it might not change, but the question right now is, do we support the language that's proposed? It's not like, do we propose other things that might possibly happen? That's, I mean, that, it, it is really an up or down, like, there, there's, there's no more, there's no backstory here. So I, I understand people wanting to be sort of conciliatory, but I, I don't, like, this is, this is what it says. That's what's be, that's what, that's what's on the table.
Well, I'm sure some questions arisen from people speaking tonight, and people want to hold and get comfortable, I have no problem with that, and so the motion would be to hold to the next meeting. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
All right.
Senator Johnson?
Couldn't hear. No.
Member Kamara?
Yes, hold.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Bailey?
Yes.
Member O'Connell?
No.
Member O'Neal?
Yes.
And I think Laura was trying to vote.
Member Clancy, was your vote? I think we missed it. Put a thumbs up for a yes, thumbs down for a no.
Actually, Joe, I had a, I, I wanted to address this before we voted, so.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
I had the hand raised, I'm sorry, I know this isn't convenient, but that's okay, it's fine, I did that. I, I'm assuming that I passed, so I can hold it till next time.
Okay.
That's fine.
Let's say yes.
Thank you.
Let's say yes. Allen, you get that? She voted yes, then. Okay. Okay. So that was held. Next item up, homework, let me see, we did the homework policy. Next is to consider endorsing the United States Legislative House Document Number 1269, Healthy Meals Help Kids Weren Act of 2023. Should I come down, or do you want me to move the meeting along? But this is, I'd just say, this is, on behalf of Jim McGovern, put this forward, and thank God, we have Jim McGovern, who really does a great job when it comes to feeding, really, not the state, not just Worcester, but the country and the world, he's focused on that. And he's putting this through, because I think the current bill was ready to expire in July.
Right.
And, and he's offering a little bit more money to it, and, and some financial assistance to make the legislation more permanent, and increase the federal reimbursement level for the schools. So I think, I think we've learned a lot during COVID, and especially, I think, I don't know, how many, how many years ago did we do the 100% for the kids? Had to be maybe five years ago? It was pre-COVID, I think, no? No? And, it was during COVID? Yeah. Or longer? Oh, it's been a long time, okay. Okay, so, motion. Member Kamara?
Thank you. I'm, I'm really excited about this bill. I know that, I think last year, there was another, anyways, I'll get to this one here. I'm really excited about this bill, mainly because of the use of locally grown foods. And I kind of, I want to understand really how much of that is going to be used, which I understand the bill talks about that with regards to reimbursements, but, yeah, so I'm appreciative of this bill, and I want to, is there a way that we can, can I ask for, can I do this? If I ask for information about how the bill, or how, yeah, how the bill is going to utilize, like, locally grown foods to support?
How would that work in city of Worcester, if that was the case?
Right, right.
Let me get a report on that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Okay. Okay. All set? So motion is to approve with additional report. Roll call.
Yes.
Senator Johnson? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Member Johnson, to consider review of the Chapter 74 programs in comprehensive high schools, including enrollment processes, criteria, and acceptance. Member Johnson?
Yeah, as we continue to talk a lot about Chapter 74 programings and, and things like that, I've had a long conversation with Superintendent Monares around this. And I, I just have a lot of questions, and I, I've been hearing from a lot of families, just a lot of questions on the process, access, equity, acceptance, not understanding the different programs that we have in the city, and, and how do you gain access to those? So I'm just asking for this, and I believe there's something in TLS already around some of this. I'm just looking for a report back on our Chapter 74 programs, the process, the criteria, acceptance rate, and any other information that could be provided regarding our programs.
Sure, thank you. Member McCullough?
I'd like to make a motion in conjunction with what Member Johnson just said, to take this with Item GB 2-244 in the TLSS Subcommittee, so that when we get an update in April, that this is part of the report back.
So I'm glad, because we've been talking about this in TLSS with our colleagues over there, I have to call you out, but I, the other piece that resonates with me, and I think everything ties up, because now we have the, the staff member to lead that, which is the, Dan? Is it? Yeah. No, it's Communication, yeah, because I think part of that role was to look at the district's website, and I think, yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah, so, anyways, so I'm happy, because we've talked about that in the past with the superintendent, and how that website is going to look like. In the past, I've had parents ask me about all of the options, like my colleague just mentioned, there's so many wonderful things, I know that, because I went through those things too, and it's so hard to see, people know, people don't know, parents want to know, kids want to know. So I'm really optimistic about this website, because, you know, it could be a game changer in terms of really relating the necessary information in the limited terms to everyone in our district. So thank you.
Thank you.
For all of us, too, yeah, exactly.
So we will send that to Teacher Warren, or you want a report?
I, I'm sorry, I made a motion.
I missed it.
That's okay. It's going to be to take it with GB 2-244 in TLSS for a report out in April.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. So that brings us to announcements. So Sunday, 6:00 PM, we're inviting the whole city of Worcester to Lowell at the Songas Center, and I'm not sure, and Mr. Allen, you can come too, yes? And, and we will, I think it'll be a great night, hopefully people come, I know the kids, the basketball players want everybody to come from the city of Worcester, the coaches and, and the, and the athletes. So I think it's going to be great for the city. If you notice, we have a couple of billboards up on Auburn Line, and we're going to put some, we're going to put some messenger boards out over the next few days from the city of Worcester, try to get people interested to go out, and the more, it's a big arena, the Songas Arena, so the more the merrier. And I'm not sure about public transportation yet, but maybe if we have something, we'll put it up on the website. People have an interest in that, but I'm sure there's buses for the students, and probably for the teachers and the, and the athletes. So, okay, so we'll see everybody on Sunday, 6:00 PM. And go North High School, right? And so we have a motion to adjourn, roll call. No, I'm sorry, motion to adjourn, others in favor, opposed or ordered? Thank you.